Good evening. Welcome to the September 22nd, 2025 meeting of the Stillwater City Council. This time I will call the meeting to order. Tonight we have a special guest from Troop 818 of the Scouts who are going to help us with the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. So if you guys want to come on up, and Beau, I don't know if you're the leader here. And if everyone else would please rise and we'll all say the Pledge of Allegiance together.
(Inaudible) To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Scouts. Counselor Clark and I had an opportunity for a few minutes before the meeting to sit and talk with Troop 818. They had lots of good questions about municipal issues and what's going on in Stillwater. So we appreciate them being here and taking interest in municipal government. All right. This time I have a proclamation in recognition of Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And I know Ally from Wings of Hope is here, so I'll read this and if you have comments, I'll invite you up to the podium at that point. Whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month is designed to support victims of domestic violence in their time of greatest need. And whereas Oklahoma is consistently ranked as one of the states with the highest rates of domestic violence. And whereas unhealthy relationships can have a lifelong negative impact on personal health and children's health. And whereas we can break the cycle of domestic violence before it starts by equipping families with skills for healthy relationships. And whereas parents, community leaders, civic organizations, and schools are an integral part of providing safe and healthy support systems for survivors. And whereas assisting survivors is not just an investment in their future, it's an investment in Oklahoma for generations to come. Now therefore, I William Joyce, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, recognize and support domestic violence survivors and hereby proclaim October of 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Stillwater. Ally? That's how you know it's working.
As you said, my name is Ally Leest and I am the Children's Program Manager at Wings of Hope Family Crisis Services here in town. So I just kind of wanted to talk about the impact of organization and the importance of the work that we do and kind of give you some numbers. So last year, Wings of Hope answered more than 1,200 calls to our crisis line. So each of those calls was not just a number, it was a person reaching out because they felt unsafe, scared, or vulnerable. We recognize Domestic Violence Awareness Month to send a clear message to our neighbors, our families, and our community that you are not alone. This October, our campaign for Domestic Violence Awareness Month is promote peaceful homes. So we believe that every person deserves a safe space to return to at the end of the day. So that's kind of what our message is going to be for the month of October. So together, we can build a community where safety, dignity, and peace are the foundation of every home. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'll just take a second to mention that, of course, Wings of Hope is one of our United Way partner agencies as well, and it's United Way campaign season. So if you are looking for a way to help support wonderful agencies like Wings of Hope here in Stillwater, the United Way of Payne County is a great place for you to reach out to. All right, councilors. Item four on the agenda is the Consent Docket. Questions, comments, or action on consent?
I move approval of consent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket. Please vote. The vote of five to zero, the consent docket is approved. Takes us to item seven, Public Hearings. 7A, Receive public comment regarding request for a map amendment to rezone property addressed as 1212 South Perkins Road from Light Industrial to Commercial General, CC-25-136. Do we have good notice on this item?
Yes, we do.
Henry?
Yes, sir. So my name is Henry Biebelheimer with Development Services. So Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilors, tonight we have a map amendment for 1212 South Perkins Road. This is to rezon from Light Industrial to Commercial General. Here's an aerial view where you can see the area outlined in pink. This property is just west of Perkins Road, north of 13th Street. Here's the street view from Perkins Road looking west. There are multiple uses on this property, one of which is a church. A church is not allowed in industrial lights, which is the current zoning of the property. So the applicant has requested to rezon to Commercial General, where that, as well as the other uses or future uses, are all allowed and permitted by right. Here's the current zoning map of the property, where you can see it being zoned IL or Light Industrial, as well as the property to the north being Light Industrial and Commercial General. And to the west, south, and east, you have RSS or Small Lot Single Family Residential. Here's the future land use map from the Conference of Plan, which does call for commercial uses at this property. So the rezoning to Commercial General does align with the future land use map of the Conference of Plan. I'm open to answer any questions if you have any.
Councilors, any questions for staff? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing. I don't have anyone signed up to speak on this item. Is anyone here planning to speak? You're good? All right, then I will close the public hearing. Henry, what was the Planning Commission's recommendation on this item?
Yes, sir. So on August 19th, 2025, with a vote of four to zero, Planning Commission recommended that the City Council approve the map amendment as presented.
Thank you, Henry. Councilors?
Motion to accept Planning Commission's recommendation?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the Planning Commission recommendation. Please vote. The vote of five to zero, the item is approved. Takes us to 7B, Public Hearing to Discuss the Completion and Closeout of the Community Development Block Grant Number 19168 for Fiscal Year 2023, the State Small Cities Grant Project at the Stillwater Public Library. Shelley Crines is here to tell us more.
Yes, the Community Development Block Grant Number 19168, Fiscal Year 2023, State Small Cities Grant Project, Stillwater Public Library Fire Sprinkler System retrofit and update, was undertaken to benefit individuals, including many with low to moderate income, who use the library and its services on a daily basis. In addition, the project made the library, which is an assembly-type occupancy where groups of people gather, and is considered a high-hazard fire risk due to all of the paper combustibles within, a much safer library with a complete and well-functioning fire sprinkler system. The project was funded with the 2023 CDBG Small Cities Grant in the amount of $181,669 from the Oklahoma Department of Commerce, with a total leverage from the city in the amount of $181,992. The project came in under budget by $15,432 due to savings on moving costs. And the project is complete, and all final costs have been incurred to make final payments to the contractor. To close out the grant and finalize all required documentation for the Oklahoma Department of Commerce, this public hearing has been advertised. And with this hearing, the final documents can be executed and the project closed out. Have any questions?
Councilors, any questions for staff? That's always good to hear projects coming in under budget. Excited about that.
Yes.
Thanks, Shelley. This time I will open the public hearing. I don't have anyone signed up to speak for this item. Is anyone here planning to? All right, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Shelley, is there a recommendation for council?
We have a motion to approve the closeout of Number 19168, Community Development Block Grant 23, Stillwater Public Library Fire Sprinkler System retrofit grant. Authorize the mayor and city manager to sign closeout documents and approve a budget amendment returning $40,508 to the general fund.
Thanks, Shelley. Councilors?
Motion to accept staff's recommendation?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the recommendation. Please vote. The vote of five to zero, that is approved. Thank you, Shelley. Item 7C, Public Hearing Pursuant to 11OS Section 22-112 and 11OS Section 22-112.4 to determine whether the mobile home trailer structure located at 924 South Duck Street, Stillwater, Oklahoma, is dilapidated as defined in 11OS Section 22-112(c) and abandoned as defined in 11OS Section 22-112.4-e.
Good evening, Mayor. My name is Beth Ann Childs. I'm a special counsel that typically handles the nuisance abatement actions. I apologize, I neglected to email you the packets. They actually, I was ahead of the curve this time, and they've been ready for quite some time. Mr. Van is present. He also has been provided a copy of the packet last week. He is agreeable to the council passing the resolution, and so you're welcome to open the public hearing should you desire, but since he's agreeable to it, you may elect just to move forward with the action item. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I will go ahead and open the public hearing. Does the property owner wish to speak?
We kept an agreement, we stuck to...
If you could, I'm sorry, if you could just come up just to make sure that we've got you on the record.
Sure.
You could introduce yourself, please.
Chris Van. I own the property itself. We've dealt with this for quite some time. You can notice in the packet. We had it set up to be moved, the movers never showed up, so now we're back here again. So it's probably going to be demoed in place. That timeframe is easily something that we can achieve, so I'm happy to work with that.
Thank you. Appreciate your cooperation. Councilors, this time I'll close the public hearing, and I think the recommendation is that we adopt the resolution when we get to that part of the agenda, correct?
Yes, Mayor, it is. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We will address it further in the resolution, just coming up soon. That does take us to item eight, Resolutions. 8A is Resolution Number CC-2025-25, a resolution to approve participation in settlements with Purdue Pharma LP, members of the Sackler family, AlvoGen Inc., Amneal Pharmaceuticals Inc., Apotex Inc., Hicma Pharmaceuticals USA Inc., Indivior Inc., Mylan Pharmaceuticals Inc., Sun Pharmaceutical Industries Inc., and Zitis Pharmaceuticals.
Okay, so...
Could you start by explaining why people name companies like this?
I'm just going to refer to them as the Purdue-Sackler Settlement and also the Secondary Small Generic Opioid Manufacturer Settlement. The resolution under consideration this evening would approve both of those settlements. I do need to point out that there have been a couple of revisions to the resolution. The revised resolutions have been provided to you, and the changes in the paragraphs are highlighted. There are also a couple of copies available in the room if a member of the public would like to see it. The agenda packet was posted prior to the Attorney General executing a state subdivision agreement, so those revisions just reflect action that we contemplated by the AG has been taken. So as a reminder, from time to time, as progress is made on various opioid claims, the city receives recommendations from our opioid council as to participation in settlements. As I stated before, this resolution is related to two settlements, the Purdue-Sackler Settlement and the Secondary Small Generic Opioid Manufacturer Settlement. Bear with me, I'm going to provide some information on both of these settlements, and feel free to stop me if you have questions. In connection with both of the, approval of both of these settlements, there are also state subdivision agreements. They are necessary as the settlements make distributions at the state level and all states participating in the settlements. The state subdivision agreement's direct distribution of the funds to the Oklahoma subdivisions. In the Purdue-Sackler Settlement, the state subdivision agreement directs that all distribution from the settlement go to litigating subdivisions, which Stillwater is a litigating political And to allocate distributions to the subdivisions in the same percentages as previous opioid settlements that were approved by the city council. All settlement distribution in the Purdue-Sackler Settlement goes to litigating subdivisions because State of Oklahoma entered into a separate settlement with Purdue before Purdue filed bankruptcy, so the state settlement did not include the litigating subdivisions. In the Small Secondary Manufacturer Settlement, the state subdivision agreement divides the distribution to Oklahoma with 75% going to litigating subdivisions and 25% going to the state's opioid abatement grant funds, which is available for all subdivisions to apply for grants. The allocation percentages set forth in the settlements for the Oklahoma litigating subdivisions are the same as previously approved by this council and other settlements. It is the formula created by Dr. Room, who's an expert in the damage and loss to communities caused by the opioid epidemic. They relied on several factors, including number of opioid pills distributed in each county in Oklahoma, the number of overdose deaths in each county, and those allocations have been a part of all of the opioid settlements. So that's the same formulation for damages for consideration this evening. The settlements are structured similarly to the previous settlements in terms of distributions that go through the state to the litigating subdivisions in Oklahoma pursuant to those state subdivision agreements. There are settlement participation forms to submit, and the subdivisions release claims to the defendants and their affiliated companies, and there are limitations on the use of the settlement funds to approved opioid abatement uses. There are also some differences, and I'll point those out now. First, I'll provide some information on the Purdue-Sackler Settlement. This settlement consists of a direct settlement with members of the Sackler family in connection with the Purdue Pharma bankruptcy. The original Purdue bankruptcy plan was approved several years ago. There were objections to that plan by some subdivisions because it released individual claims against Sackler family members who were not petitioners in that bankruptcy. The U.S. Supreme Court agreed with those objections, and the plan was sent back to the bankruptcy court to be renegotiated. So ultimately, Sackler family members agreed to pay $6.5 billion in 16 payments over 15 years, including $1.5 billion on the settlement's effective date, which is expected to be in 2026. This amount from the Sacklers is in addition to amounts available from the Purdue estate on the effective date of settlement, which is expected to be $900 million, and amounts that may be available in the future from the estate through the sale of addiction treatment drugs. The settlement in the Purdue bankruptcy and with the Sackler settlements include many more types of claims and number of claims than just the subdivisions' claims. So the components of that settlement agreement are approval of Purdue's bankruptcy plan and participation in a direct settlement with the Sacklers to settle governmental subdivision and Purdue shareholder claims against the Sacklers. The distributions to Oklahoma litigating subdivisions include shorter payment terms of 10 years. The allocations are at the same percentages as previous opioid settlements. The estimated total distribution to Oklahoma subdivisions in the Purdue-Sackler Settlement is $24 million. This is assuming that all participation incentives are met. And Stillwater's estimated gross allocation would be $268,704, again, assuming all participation incentives are met. The estimate excludes 10% holdback for appeals but does not include a deduction for attorney's fees. Approval of the resolution would approve the following related to the Purdue-Sackler settlement. Direct council to vote in favor of Purdue's bankruptcy plan authorizes the mayor to sign and submit the Purdue settlement participation form and approves the Purdue state subdivision agreement on allocation of distributions from the Purdue-Sackler Settlement. Are there any questions on that one? Here we go. The Secondary Small Generic Opioid Manufacturer Settlement. These settlements are with eight generic secondary opioid manufacturers. The structure of these settlements is very similar to prior opioid settlements. There's a total settlement amount for each manufacturer, and then there are incentives based on a participation that must be met for 100% the settlement amount to be paid to each state. About half of these settlements will be paid in one lump sum, the other will be paid over a period of years, up to 10 years in at least one of those settlements. A unique feature of these settlements is that the secondary manufacturers' settlement is that all subdivisions that have been litigating against opioid manufacturers can participate in these settlements even if the subdivision did not file a claim against each secondary manufacturer. That rationale is for the manufacturers to get releases, but also for the subdivisions to have better settlement administration, to make it easier for that. So although the City of Stillwater did file claims against Hicma and Divier and Mylan, participating in these other settlements, it does benefit the city because we are able to do so even though we have not previously filed a claim. The settlements with the secondary manufacturers have cash and product components. The total cash for these eight settlements is $844 million. They'll be distributed to states. Then in Oklahoma, there's a state subdivision agreement to allocate to the Oklahoma distribution between the state and the litigating subdivisions. The allocations to the Oklahoma litigating subdivisions will be the same as prior opioid settlements. The estimate for Oklahoma's share of the eight settlements is $12.9 million, and our council's estimate for the allocation to Stillwater results in a gross amount distribution ranging from $54,216 to $108,432, depending on participation incentives met. Again, this is deducting 10% holdback for appeals but not including deductions for attorney fees. So approval of this resolution, which is relative to secondary manufacturer settlements, approves the following. Authorizes the mayor to sign and submit the settlement participation forms and approves the small manufacturer's state subdivision agreement on allocation of the distributions from the secondary manufacturer's settlement. Our opioid council for the city recommends approval of the resolution.
Councilors, questions about the resolution?
I wouldn't dare.
I mean, we've done one of these before, right? One of the other big settlements that we've approved, or have we done two?
There's been at least two.
Yeah, okay. And all of that money that we end up getting from these eventually over however many years it ends up going, goes directly to opioid abatement programs within the city.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, councilors, questions? Further questions or action on the resolution?
Motion to adopt Resolution Number CC-2025-25.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Please vote. Resolution's adopted with a vote of five to zero. Item 8B is Resolution Number CC-2025-26. This is a resolution of the Stillwater City Council declaring the mobile home structure located at 924 South Duck Street, also known as 924 and a half, South Duck Street, Stillwater, Oklahoma, dilapidated and abandoned, and a public nuisance detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the general public and the community, and ordering the dilapidated structure to be torn down and removed pursuant to 11OS Section 22-112. From earlier this evening, the agreed resolution allows for 90 days for the structure to be removed before further action would be taken by the city. Questions, comments, or action on the resolution?
I move adoption of Resolution CC-2025-26.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Please vote. That resolution's adopted with a vote of five to zero. Item nine, Ordinances. On first read, Ordinance 3580, an ordinance rezoning property addressed as 1212 South Perkins Road from Light Industrial to Commercial General. This is from earlier this evening. Councilors?
Motion to advance Ordinance Number 3580 to second read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to advance Ordinance 3580. Please vote. The vote of five to zero, Ordinance 3580 is advanced to second reading. Item 9B is Ordinance Number 3581, an ordinance amending the Stillwater City Code by amending Chapter 2, Administration, Article 6, Financial Affairs, Division 1, Generally, by amending Section 2-583, Finance Department, by providing that the Director of Finance may also hold the title of Chief Financial Officer, and that all duties, powers, and responsibilities apply equally to the dual title of Director of Finance and Chief Financial Officer, repealing all ordinances to the contrary and providing for separability.
This is a minor change to the code that simply allows the Finance Director to use the title of Chief Financial Officer. As you may recall, that title has been used in the past, but a minor code change is recommended to ensure that that title can be used in official documents and communications. All duties, powers, and responsibilities associated with the position remain the same as set forth in the Charter and the city code. The title CFO is commonly used in the private sector, and there is a trend in municipal government to use the title Chief Financial Officer. This shift mirrors that practice and just recognizes the importance of the role and the duties of that position.
I was pleased to see this in the packet, by the way. It's something that should have been done a long time ago.
Is that a motion?
I move adoption. I move to advance Ordinance 3581 to second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to advance the ordinance to second read. Please vote. The vote of five to zero, Ordinance 3581 is advanced to second reading. On second reading, we have Ordinance 3576, an ordinance to rezon property addressed as 320 South Walnut Street from Small Lot Single Family Residential to Two Family Residential. Councilors?
Motion to adopt Ordinance Number 3576. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance. Please vote. The vote of five to zero, Ordinance 3576 is adopted. Reports from the officers and the board. Ms. Carnley?
I think I've used up all my time this evening. No reports.
Mr. Moore?
Yes, Mayor. First, I'd like to welcome Rachel Burnish. She's here with us this evening. Rachel is our new Assistant City Manager at the City of Stillwater. We're so excited to have Rachel join our team. She is going to be working closely with our Community Development Services. Sorry, David. Development Services is the title officially in our charter, with engineering, with Bill Millis, with our electric utility, and our water utility, and our Building Life Safety Group. So Rachel comes to us from Chickasha, where she's had experience in the same role as Assistant City Manager and Development Services Director. She has a ton of great history and expertise we're excited to have here in Stillwater. I know she's been a joy to join our team already, fitting in great, and has already hit the ground running on some big projects. So excited to have Rachel here and excited to have her in our community, so.
Welcome.
Oh, I guess I have another announcement, too. As you may know, and I think I ran into it today, 19th is currently closed. We never like to close our roads, but we did today due to an extensive water line break. So just want to make that announcement. But also, more importantly, is we have all that information on our website in those types of outages. And so if you go to stillwaterok.gov/outage, we share notices there and a lot of that lifetime information. So anyway, I know our crews are working on that, a repair on 19th. We appreciate their hard work. I know they'll be working through the night.
That's between Sanger and Western, right?
Yes, thank you.
Which is prime getting to the middle school in Sanger territory, so it is a problem. But we appreciate those crews being very diligent to try to get that fixed.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor?
Yes. Block 34 is Stillwater's go-to spot for community fun with concerts, yoga in the park, and more. Tomorrow evening, we have Papa Mahjong at 7:00 PM in Simmons Bank Pavilion. Also, did you know, I did not know this, but I'm super excited to know this, they have Block 34 swag. I've been wondering, I've seen Brady walking around with a hat, I think. There's Block 34 swag available. And to check out event dates, order swag, and make park reservations, go to block34.org. It has truly been a joy to participate in these events on Block 34 and to see our community gather and start to build just more connection through all these different activities. Our families really enjoyed walking to the farmer's market and then over to the market at Block 34 on Saturdays. It's just really fun, and I hope to, I just thank you to everyone that's doing that programming and working so hard to maintain the park. It looks beautiful. Also, another update about our community parks and spaces. The splash pads located in Boomer Lake and Southern Woods Park will be closed for the season beginning Monday, September 29th. Many thanks to our Parks and Community Resources staff for all their hard work.
Does the, this is a question I probably should have asked staff at a different point, but is the splash pad on Block 34 still going? It's going to stay on right when we have events out there?
Yeah.
Cool.
Probably when temperatures get to a certain...
I feel like it's too cold.
Yeah, we'll shut it down.
Thank you. Counselor Hawkins?
The deadline for the utility box art contest has been extended to October 1st. This year's theme is Stillwater Strong, celebrating the resilience, creativity, and spirit of our community. Enter online at stillwaterart.org or drop off your artwork at the Stillwater Community Center. Don't miss your chance to make your mark. Looking forward to the new utility box art.
That sounds like a scout merit badge, an art project designer. Counselor Clark?
Saturday, November 1 will be the city's bi-annual Household Hazardous Waste Collection Event at the Convenience Collection Center from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM, 807 South Perkins Road. During the event, residents are encouraged to drop off any household pollutants for free. Accepted items include oil-based paints, pesticides, herbicides, household cleaning products, pool chemicals, unused pharmaceuticals, and much, much more. The Convenience Collection Center will be collecting regular trash and recycling during the event, and I believe we do not accept yard waste typically during that event because the vehicles stick out and block traffic. So during, for that eight to one o'clock window, don't take yard waste on November 1st. Trainers and commercial waste are not allowed ever in there. And for more details, go to stillwaterok.gov/HHW for Household Hazardous Waste.
Thank you. Counselor Harden?
The City of Stillwater is warning applicants who have recently been on public meeting agendas to be on the lookout for fraudulent invoices. These fake invoices appear highly detailed, sometimes even using the city's logo, and request payment by wire transfer for services such as planning or engineering. The city will never request payment by wire transfer and does not send invoices in this manner. If you receive anything that seems suspicious... If you receive anything that seems suspicious or unexpected, do not respond or pay. Instead, contact the city directly at 405-742-8213 to verify it. We ask everyone to remain cautious, and if you receive one of these invoices, please report it to us so that we can protect you and others in the community. That's kind of scary.
I've seen one of them.
Have you really?
Yeah, somebody sent it, like emailed me and said, "Why did you guys send me this invoice?" And I looked at it and I thought, "Why did we send them that invoice?" And then I looked at it again, and I was like, "Well, I don't think this is real." And it wasn't. It was a scam, and there, people put a lot of time and effort into that, which is really disappointing, but yeah, be on the lookout for those for sure.
Yeah, I had a notice today from one of our great new developers in town, and he, yep, saw the scam, recognized it, actually got us information, additional information for us. We sent it to the PD. Our PD's forwarding it to those agencies to investigate, and we're making sure that every application that comes in through Development Services is getting a flyer and information so that they're aware of the scam.
And we did also notify the Attorney General's office.
Okay, yes, thank you. Well, in lighter news, Lexicon is back, and better than ever. For those of you who don't know what Lexicon is, it's the Stillwater Cultural District's free mini Comic-Con for fans of comic books, science fiction, gaming of all types, cosplay, anime, and pop culture. Events are scheduled from Thursday, October 23rd through Saturday, October 25th, with the main event on Saturday from 10:00 to 4:00 in multiple locations, including the library and community center. This year's event is a team effort of the Stillwater Community Center, the Stillwater Public Library, Prairie Arts Center, Stone Cloud Brewing, Stillwater History Museum at the Shorr Center, Stillwater Public Schools, the city of Stillwater, Visit Stillwater, and Block 34. For a full list of events and details, go to stillwaterok.gov/lexicon. Always a fun event. Any questions or inquiries? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the city council. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater City Council is now adjourned, and at this time, very briefly, I will call to order the Stillwater Economic Development Authority meeting for September 22nd, 2025. Trustees, questions, comments, or action on the consent docket?
Motion to approve the consent docket?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve consent. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that consent docket is approved. Any reports from the officers of the board? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn CETA. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater Economic Development Authority is now adjourned, and that concludes our meetings for the evening.